...a prayer and a salute to our flag. God ran us the wisdom to make those decisions in the best interest of our residents. I have asked Alyssa, Alyssa, Alyssa and the Carlin Panthers winners tonight, cheerleading winners, to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. So on a big cheerleading voice. Go ahead.
(Inaudible) to the right of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, ladies. Terry, notice of publication.
Mayor, this combined meeting of the Bamborough Council being held on its 13th day of January 2014 has been advertised and posted in accordance with Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 Public Law, 1975.
Roll call.
Councilperson Buchanan.
Here.
Iker.
Here.
McGill.
Here.
Melendez.
Here.
Novak.
Here.
Rittenhouse.
Here.
Approval of prior minutes of the mayor and council. Council president.
Okay, I make a motion that we approve the minutes of the mayor and council, November 25, 2013, combined meeting, December 3, 2013, special meeting, and December 16, combined meeting and executive session.
It would be subject to correction if necessary.
Subject to correction, subject to correction if change is necessary.
Thank you.
Is there a motion? Is there a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Councilperson Buchanan.
Yes.
Iker.
Yes.
McGill.
Yes.
Melendez.
Yes.
Novak.
Yes.
Rittenhouse.
Yes.
Tonight we have some presentations, so with that, I'm going to ask Councilwoman Iker to step in front of the rail, and my colleagues and I will stand behind the rail. We have some very special young people here tonight, and one not so young.
Thank you. First, I'd like to ask up the Cerebral Leprechaun Midget Cheerleaders to come up to the front, please.
Any of the parents that want to get up for this Kodak moment, move around the room, over to us a little.
These are the Cerebral Leprechaun Midget Cheerleading Squad. I have to say that back in, I would say, 2004, 2005, most of these girls got together to start their cheerleading career with the leprechauns. And they've gone from four and five, well, mostly five-year-olds, to where you see them today at 13-years-old. And they've come a long way, and this is their last season together because they aged out. So what happens is, you know, they go on to their high school and play there. But what happened this year was, after hard work and perseverance, they made it from, all the way from New Jersey, and they finally got to Florida this year, which is the goal of every cheerleading squad that goes with Pop Warner. So out of, I don't even know how many teams there are, but out of the nation, the Leprechaun Midget Cheerleading Squad placed sixth in the national cheerleading competition. So because they represented Cerebral so well, and we're so proud of them, we wanted to bring them here. We have Karen Sissick, who is the, she's in charge of the cheerleaders for the leprechauns, so if she could just maybe introduce or just say thank you or something.
I don't think our whole team is here. We have 28 girls. No, we're not all here. Anyhow, I would really just like to introduce Crystal Park, who is our head coach. She prepared something short to say for the girls.
First off, we'd like to congratulate the Morgan Carlin Panther, my teammate team, on their third place finish at the AYC National Championship. That's an incredible accomplishment, and we are very proud to call you our sister team. Both the Panthers and Leprechauns had the honor of representing our great town of Cerebral at their respective national championships, and I can honestly say that it's an experience that can change your life. It was also amazing to see our town come together to support our fundraising efforts, especially our pancake breakfast. We were all so thankful to see hundreds of people so willing to help us on our road to nationals. This particular Leprechaun team has been working towards this goal of competing at nationals for many years, and to see them finally achieve their goal is indescribable. We're very proud of these 28 ladies for their outstanding season, including highlights such as Central Jersey Champions coming out in the top two of the entire eastern region, and of course, finishing up their season at the Pop Warner National Cheer and Dance Championships, coming in sixth in the entire country. Overcoming setbacks such as injuries, disappointment, and issues beyond our control, these young ladies handled themselves with poise and maturity, and use these setbacks as motivation to earn their bid to nationals. As a coach, the defining moment in your career is watching your team shine on that mat and seeing those glowing faces as they're running off, knowing that they nailed their routine the very best that they could, which is all we could have asked of them. And nothing can beat the feeling of having our name called as one of the two teams that will be representing the eastern region at nationals. As a coaching staff, we are so proud and honored to have experienced the season with these great girls, and watching them grow up and mature right in front of our eyes has been nothing short of incredible. Their teamwork, determination, and heart for the sport is commendable, and my wish is that they always remember this amazing experience and hold on to these memories no matter where they go in life, just like you.
Girls, I just want to, on behalf of the borough, tell you how proud we are of you for all of your accomplishments, and keep up the good work as you move on to high school. At this time, I'd like to introduce the Morgan Carlin Panthers. They would come on up here. The mighty ones. Well, at least you could see me now. This group of young ladies range in age, what, five, six-year-olds mostly? Six and seven, six and seven-year-olds. And they too represented Cerebral proudly in Florida under the, what is it, AY?
AYC.
AYC for cheerleading. This group of girls, they came in third place in their nationals. And from what I've heard is that the groups that they went against were all older girls. So they did a great job, they worked really hard, and I will let their coach now tell a little bit about them.
Yes, on the spot. Okay, my name is Jen Pashi, and I am the head coach of this team. I also coach with Tracy Kehoe and Fior Blata and Erin Handy. Fior was a former bomber captain, and Erin is a bomber now. I actually am one of the bomber coaches. I coached at the high school for five years, and I gave up my paid position to do this because my daughter Joanna is on the team, and I probably, I'm here more than I was at the high school. I mean, we are, talk about dedication, six and seven-years-old, they practice their behinds off. They don't leave a prep, not covered in sweat. They really do work hard, and they have improved so much. They did come in third place out of 13 teams. They beat all the New Jersey teams. They were beat by a team from California and Texas. And this is our first year doing something like this. We're the youngest there because we're in an eight-and-under division, and we have no eight-year-olds. So we definitely know we're going to be back next year. We have become a family, and we're very proud to be part of the Morgan Carlin Panthers, and we thank you for having us here.
Girls, thank you for coming out. We all look forward to how much you're going to accomplish in your long careers with the Panthers. And go home and do your homework.
So we've had the youth of Cerebral, which we're very proud of. Now we're going to have someone whose youth may be behind him, but the best is yet to come. Mr. Sandy Triolo. The reason he's the best is about the... Mrs. Sandy Triolo.
So we have this plaque presented to Santo Triolo for dedicated service rendered as the director municipal department head of the Water and Sewer Department of the Borough of Cerebral, 1992 to 2013. On behalf of myself and the borough council, we're very proud of you. You look like you can work a few more years, so I don't know where you're going. But we wish you well in your endeavors, and this was a long, outstanding venture. We do have a replacement for you. I don't know if I'm going to be around another 25 years he's here, but I'm sure it's going to be really difficult to replace. So we thank you, and we wish you very well.
Just so everyone knows, Sandy, Cerebral owns its own water department. We own the raw material, we own the reservoir, we own the processing, we own the distribution. And how many customers, Sandy? It's like 11 or 14, it's a, it's actually, it's a tremendous asset to the borough. But Sandy has 42 or 41? 41 years with the Borough of Cerebral. 21 with us. Where were you, what, were you taking slack on off? 41 in the business. Anyway, he's an asset, which I hate to lose, but I wish him the very, very best. He's the kind of guy, you just tell him the problem, if he hasn't already figured it out beforehand, and he just gets it done. You know, he's a get her done kind of guy. He will, we will miss him. He was a great leader to his staff, and he had the respect of all the elected officials, present and past, and we will miss you dearly, and we wish you great success in the future. But this is a little bit like a roast, so I'm going to give the microphone to the council president.
I don't, I'm not too good at roasting. I'd just like to say, I worked with Sandy back in the 90s too, and again, like Kennedy said, you ask Sandy anything, even sometimes I'd ask him things that were already in his department, and he managed to figure it out for me. So Sandy, I want you to enjoy your retirement, but I'm sure that if it's anything like my husband's, the honey-do list is so long, he's still waiting to retire. Good luck.
Sandy, you are, you don't know me, my name is Dave McGill. I'm a new councilperson, and you're the old water man now. And you're about to do something I wish I could do, and that's retire. And you look great. I wish they could keep you around a lot longer because all I heard were so many grand things about you. God bless you and your wife, enjoy your retirement. Don't get involved, the honey-do list, please, you know? But really, God bless everybody. You kept this town together.
I'm really the new councilperson out here, but as a 20-year resident of the town, thank you for everything, and I know everything has just been great, and enjoy your retirement.
Sandy, I just want to thank you for your service. I had fortunate, unfortunate, being in charge of water and sewer when Sandy hit, and you did a phenomenal job keeping the water flowing for our residents and making sure that we had what we needed, and the other stuff kept flowing as much as it could because of all your hard work. We're going to miss you, and I want to thank you for your years of service with Cerebral.
I too just want to thank you for your service, but most importantly, I want to thank you for the class trips you allowed my classes to come to. We had fourth grade, we teach the water cycle, and I thought one of the great things to do was bring them to the water department to see the water in life. So Sandy would graciously take our class there, and the enthusiasm and the knowledge you had just shown through, and the children enjoyed it. So thank you for allowing us to come, and thank you for your service.
Thank you, Sandy. The mayor must do words. You should say thank you.
Thank you. It's been an honor working for the borough for all these years. I met a lot of wonderful people. The staff was fantastic. I had a lot of people behind me in all the departments, and that's what made everything go. So thank you.
Janet. She got it back. Best of luck. And the last is, I'm going to ask the Environmental Commission led by Teri Yetsko. They have a presentation they wish to make, so if you'd please come up. Is there a mic there? Yeah, there is.
Good evening. As the mayor said, my name is Teri Yetsko, and I am currently the chairperson of the Cerebral Environmental Commission. I am here this evening to speak about Professor Linnesson, a professor at the Blaustein School of Planning and Public Policy, who conducted a study of the flooding on Weber Avenue in 2013. I was asked to attend a meeting on June 19, 2013, where the professor mapped out his intended study of the affected area. The professor had requested and was given permission by Cerebral to conduct this study of the Weber Avenue flood area. The professor was tasked with finding solutions to the flooding problem, and his study was funded by the Geraldine R. Dodge Foundation. After three months of study, Professor Linnesson gave a presentation on September 3, 2013, to the Cerebral Environmental Commission, exhibiting 13 options that would improve the existing problem on Weber Avenue. On December 19, I attended a meeting at the Rutgers Blaustein School, where Professor Linnesson presented his final report entitled, "Planning and Design Implications of Flooding and Climate Change on Cerebral and the Raritan River Estuary." It is the opinion of the Cerebral Environmental Commission that the mayor and council members should take the opportunity to view the professor's finished product. Since the borough gave permission for this study, the entire presentation is about Cerebral and the alternative option to deal with the flooding problem on Weber Avenue. Our commission believes the governing body needs to see what is being presented by the professor. This presentation will be presented to many professional groups that Professor Linnesson is affiliated with. The SCA is requesting that the governing body set a time for the possible showing of this material at a time and place at their discretion. Thank you for your time and consideration of this important matter.
Thank you, Terry. Terry, if you would, with the consent of council, I'll ask you to coordinate that with the borough clerk, and whether the presentation is done here or at the senior center because if we have more than four members of the governing body together, the sunshine law takes effect, and it becomes a public meeting. That being said, Terry, if you'd advertise it as would any other meeting. But with the advice, any objections from the governing body? And a very big thank you to you and the Environmental Commission for the work on this and for all the work that you do. So again, you remain the point person and work out the date and time and place with the clerk. Thank you, Terry. Now, it may be time for young cheerleaders to either do their homework, or go for pizza and ice cream, or to make it back home. We're very proud of you, ladies, very proud of you. Sandy, that's you too. Move to new business.
Mayor, due to business, I'd like to report, having received the notice from the CFO as to the award of the notes to Amboy Bank in accordance with local, in accordance with local bond law. Motion to receive and file, please.
Art, is there a motion? To receive and file. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Next item.
Have the introduction of following ordinance, ordinance number 243-14, and ordinance repealing ordinance number 242-13, adopted on December 16, 2013, and further amending and supplementing Chapter 8, General Licensing of the Revised General Ordinances of the Borough of Cerebral to Section 8-4 Solicitors and Cavicers, and to amend Section 8-4.6, unlawful to solicit, do not knock list, and signs posted.
Councilman Buchanan.
Yes, Mayor, this was just to clean up the prior ordinance Terry and Mike worked on a little bit further. And at this time, I move the ordinance be approved on first reading, advertised according to law in a public hearing to be held on January 27.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Next item.
Mayor, we have the consent agenda resolution.
This time, I'm going to open the public portion for any question or comment on consent agenda items. Are there any questions or comments? Being no questions or comments, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move the public portion be called and closed, and consent agenda items be approved on roll call vote. I just want to make one thing. 2014-32, there's a typo, it was advertised correctly, appointing Ronald Connors as a truck driver heavy, there are, it's two, it is a separate classification under civil service, and it was just a typo in the written one, but it was on the internet correctly. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, as noted, is there a motion? Oh, I'm sorry, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, with that unanimous vote, we'll move forward. Committee reports, administration, and finance, I think it's councilman, wait, it's, no, it's me.
It's Dan Buchanan. I'll get this rectified.
Who is it? Who is it anywhere?
It's Councilman Buchanan.
Oh, it's Dan, okay.
I move the following minutes be received and filed, the Board of Education minutes, December 3, 2013.
Is there a motion? Next item.
Letter B, the applications for bingo raffles, everything looks in accordance, and look to approve number one and two.
Is there a motion? Oh, is there any objection, sorry. Okay, next item.
Letter C, the tax clearance for Victory Entertainment. Is there anything else that we need to do on that, Terry, or is there anything?
That was the last time we were waiting for, in order to renew what we had received, the special ruling on this last year.
And that's 1213, what about?
This is, that's all, I have paperwork and...
No, we have an objection approved.
Any objection? Okay, next item, councilman.
With that, I spoke with Terry earlier today, reviewing the, I'm sorry, just looked at the paperwork, the council's orders, sorry, rules of order. There was a couple corrections that need to be made in that. The first one being that it says that we're meeting on the first and third Mondays, and that it's on 7:30, and the second one is that we have agenda meetings on the Mondays before. As everyone knows, a couple years ago, we changed our meeting schedules to do second and fourth at 7, and it was both the agenda and the business meeting, so we just need to get that corrected. Do we have to go for an approval after?
That would have to be the form of the ordinance.
Number two, we've got a list, and I asked Terry again, for the Varcadish Temple, they gave their schedule for 2014, and it's my understanding that they did not apply for a special permit. What is the process for them to get the special permit? Do they have enough time for their first event? It's not until March, so they have plenty of time. But I also asked if, once they do get the special permit, if it's approved, would we contact the local businesses such as the emergency squad, Knights of Columbus, post office, as well as the Board of Education, so that they can make appropriate plans. You know, there's a couple, there's one actually on a Friday night in October, which sometimes conflicts with football, so before they make their schedule, if we can coordinate that so we don't have a bigger logjam on Washington Road as we already have.
They have been notified that the applications are supposed to be in 45 days before any event, so that we can go through the application and review process. They have been notified, I have not heard back from them at all, so...
So the end of the month, they have the first event.
Who's the liaison?
From the police department. To the, to the temple.
Oh, to the temple, I don't know.
Liaison would be to the temple, Mayor.
All right, well, Dan, if you would, it's a house of worship, so please, you know, please reach out to them.
And just make sure that the first date is given a copy too, so...
Other than that, progress. Thank you. Before we go forward, the gentleman in the back, is your son here for scouting, or are you here for, in the event he has homework, we'll get you through the process? Okay. You okay? All right. With that, we'll go to planning and zoning, and Councilman McGill.
Thank you, Mayor. Minutes and departmental reports, will the following minutes and reports be received and filed? Number one, the planning board minutes of December 4, 2013.
Is there a motion? Let's just receive and file.
Receive resolution adopted on January 8, 2014, by the planning board referring the Crossman Industrial Development Pro-Russia area. Share cost of off-track improvement back to the mayor and council for adoption.
Next item.
Mayor.
Mayor, if I can maybe explain to the council.
Okay.
This is an item that was discussed first by the council back in November. Planning board granted approval for the Crossman Industrial Track, and as part of that approval, there was discussion of late view drive extension. It was a recommendation that a fair share ordinance be adopted. That was forwarded to the council, it was referred to your attorney to prepare the appropriate resolution, but there was an objection that was raised by the developer's attorney. Since that time, the planning board and its legal council has reviewed it, they've adopted an amending resolution, and that's what's on your agenda this evening. So based upon that amending resolution, if you want to move forward, as you did back in November, you should refer it to your attorney and have the appropriate resolution prepared that recommends the off-track.
Councilman McGill, this is the recommendation of the planning board?
Yes.
The amended?
Yes, it is, Mayor.
Counselor, if you would, prepare.
Yeah, record dancing, Kai spoke in the opportunity to record dancing, just prepare it up all out tomorrow.
Okay, next item.
Public notices, Mayor. Public notice and notices to the Borough of Cerebral as an adjacent property owner. Number one, the County of Middlesex, notice of two public hearings. One on January 9, and the Middlesex County Board have chosen a freeholders' meeting room, and the other on January 23, in Perth Amboy, council chambers, to hear any and all persons regarding the proposed sale of roadway improvements along Mauer Road, CR-654, a public right-of-way in Perth Amboy, to Buckeye Perth Amboy Terminal LLC, to receive and file. An application before the planning board on January 15 at 7:30 p.m., submitted by John John Mikowski for a minor subdivision approval and bulk variance to permit the construction of a single-family residence on property known as 225 Tyler Street. And number three, an application, or applications before the zoning board of adjustment on January 22, 2014, at 7 o'clock p.m., submitted dorming, pergama, falcon, foreside, and rear addition to existing home at 50 Merritt Avenue, and the installation of wheelchair lift on front porch, receive and file.
Anything else, councilman?
Just a couple comments, Mayor. The American Red Cross right now is going through a tough time because of the storms, especially in New Jersey. They're very low on blood in New Jersey. I'm going to try and look into something, possibly getting a blood mobile down into Cerebral, maybe onto borough property. People who have gone through this with blood know how important it is, and I think the people of New Jersey always step up, the people of Cerebral always step up, so if not a blood mobile, anyone who feels the inclination, it'd be great if you gave a pint. One other thing, it's a shame she left, Teri Yetsko, because... you give a pint, uh, one other thing, it's a shame she left, Terri Etsko, because, you know, how much you think Terri Etsko gets paid? How, the answer is nothing, okay, and she spends all of this time helping us in the Borough of Sereville, going to this seminar, listening to the information on this study, bringing it back to us, so that we, basically, we'll have a symposium on it, these are people who have their heart and soul into Sereville, and no one knows who they are, you know, they're not famous athlete, they're not the, uh, the famous actor or actress, it's Terri Etsko, and look what she's done for us, along with dozens of other people, so, uh, congratulations there, thank you, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Public Safety, Councilman Rittenhouse.
Thank you, Mayor, uh, there are no minutes or department reports at this time, B, applications for wrecker license renewals, received seven light-duty wrecker applications plus two heavy-duty wrecker applications for renewal for two thousand and fourteen, pending inspection and insurance approvals.
Anything else, councilman?
No, that is it, thank you.
Thank you, Public Works, Council President?
Yes, Mayor, um, I'd like to, uh, thank, uh, the workers from the Department of Public Works, uh, we've been hit probably with more storms before, uh, Christmas than, than in any of the years I can remember lately, and then, of course, last weekend with our ice storm, uh, they really have done yeoman duty, and I really wanna, uh, thank them for that, um, I have a few questions, um, Mike, can you tell me where we are with the White Oaks lot?
Yes, um, we sent a letter for appraisals for all the properties, um, once we get the appraisals back, we'll do, uh, offer letters, um, but we're just waiting for the appraisals to come back.
Do we have any idea how long that's gonna take, I mean?
No, you know what, um, I text, uh, and I looked at our computer, basically tomorrow, Rose had texted me, said she's giving a, Rose Michael, he's gonna give the appraisal, uh, praiser, uh, called tomorrow saying, look, where are my appraisals?
Okay, thank you, um, I received, I, uh, read a copy of a letter where, uh, the, there was complaints about red zone violating, uh, the terms of their licensing, um, does anybody know where we stand on that, or are we writing up ABC violations, but what are we doing?
It's gotta come about in June when they go for the license renewal.
We can't stop them now even though they keep violating it?
Well, I've talked to, I've talked to the chief, uh, they're just not cooperative, um, with the Sereville Police Department, and ours is more of a reaction than, than, we react, uh, to, to what they're doing rather than them working in a cooperative manner with the Borough of Sereville, and what they, uh, what they fail to realize is when they come for their annual renewal, there will be conditions placed on their license.
Okay, I...
There are violations of the conditions.
That's what I mean, there are violations of the conditions we put on it before, how long does that go on, they just keep violating conditions, right, can we, can we not renew their license because of all of our...
Absolutely, thank you, you can derive a renewal.
Well, Mayor, if you remember, we've gone through this before, only to lose to the state ABC, uh, the chief is in the process of, of, uh, finding a prosecutor who specializes in this, so let's let them do their job.
Now, I was just wondering, what, what is the, I mean, every time they do something wrong, is there some sort of violation issued by the town, and that, that we can show some kind of paper trail?
If I, if I may, uh, Mayor, this has been a, um, a longstanding issue for the past at least six months, where the attorney for one of the, uh, neighboring bars has, has kept us abreast, the chief has been very active in this, we've documented a paper trail, as a matter of fact, um, I know that a license, I saw the, uh, renewal license submitted, uh, discussions on it, so, we have a paper trail, the chief has been wonderful in, uh, advising them of the conditions, so, you know, again, non-compliance will come back a lot of these people.
Also, uh, this really isn't in Public Works, uh, but there was, um, an advertisement in the paper about the, uh, temple making the accusation that the planning board didn't act properly, I understand you're involved in this, Mike?
Yes, you know, and I had the opportunity to speak to both, um, and what, uh, everyone may be aware, there was a notice of default, uh, placed in the paper, which apparently, based on my discussions with Mr. Hobish and Mr. Sax, um, the reason why there was no action on it is because, uh, the planning board didn't have the, um, uh, proper jurisdiction, so they filed the application, um, in the wrong church, um, so, I sent a letter to, um, the new attorney is Mr. Stein, advising them that based on my discussions with the plant, the zoning board, uh, attorney, as well as the planning board, that he could file the application in the wrong, um, department or entity or, or board, and Mr. Sax was gonna follow up that letter with, with another letter today.
Thank you, that's it, Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Recreation, Councilwoman Iker.
Thank you, Mayor, I just have a little note from, uh, the Recreation Director, registration for all Mommy and Me Rec Center and Little Kids Playtime at Kennedy Park is going on Monday through Friday, eight to four until January seventeenth, um, sorry, uh, call the rec office for information, the Friends of Tara and Jeff Schnitzer are sponsoring a rock and roll reunion benefit to help with fam, help the family, um, with their expenses during Tara's fight of her serious illness, Jeff Schnitzer is an employee of the Borough in the Recreation Department, and any support or donations would be greatly appreciated, the benefit is on January nineteenth from twelve to six PM at Bello's Sports Pub on Washington Road, there's gonna be raffles, tricky tray, and silent auction items along with entertainment from three bands, Simple Groove, that's, um, Phil Quigley's band, um, The Fog, and The Rock Daddies, um, and Clem Skarszynski will perform all afternoon, cash bar and cash food available at Bello's with a portion being donated back to the cause, pre-sale tickets are twenty dollars, tickets at the door are twenty-five, and all entering will receive, will receive ten tickets for tricky tray day of the event, uh, tickets can also be purchased at the rec office Monday through Friday, eight to four until the seventeenth. Just wanna let you know that, um, I'm gonna be giving, um, Mr. Dupont, with the help of Dan, Jerry, and, um, with input from the Recreation Advisory Board, we have created an ordinance, uh, focusing on funding, accountability, and a procedure needed to be followed by the recognized organizations, um, the rec, all the, um, recreation organizations in town, so, um, I'm gonna be forwarding that over to Mike to check over before, uh, make sure legally everything is worded correctly and all of that, and then, um, we'll be able to give it to the full council. I was also informed of a meeting that had taken place, um, I guess it was last week, in regard to two organizations trying to work out their differences, and in that conversation, there was a, um, there was a claim made a, at the meeting, and I would just like clarification on it, and I, um, the claim was made by the pseudo-president of the Sereville Athletic Association, that they are making money leasing the fields between, and they're getting between five and six thousand dollars, um, to do so, Dan, do you recall that comment?
There, there was a comment made about making money, I don't know exactly what he was, I don't know what he was speaking about, but if he was leasing, I don't know about leases, I don't know about leases, anything like that.
Right, well, the comment was that they're leasing the fields for between five and six thousand dollars they're making on that, and I have a, a problem with that on, on a couple fronts, uh, the first front is that we lease those fields from the Board of Education, they're not anyone's fields but the Board of Eds, and we lease them for a dollar a year, um, it was a fifteen-year lease that keeps getting renewed, um, so, those fields are just permitted out, and no one should be making money off them, um, so, and the second thing is that we're creating fields for this new organization and putting taxpayer dollar into that, and if this organization is actually making money off of fields that don't belong to them, um, I wanna know what, what we can do to check to see if this is correct, if this is an actual, um, what, what legally we can do to, can we, to see if this is true.
You can always ask the Board of Education, uh, it's apparently their field, is that correct?
No, they lease them to the Borough, and then the Borough permits it out to, uh, athletic associations.
I can speak to the superintendent of the Board of Education.
Well, no, well, they won't know...
No, it's a Borough issue, it's not a Board of Ed issue.
Okay.
The, yes, how, to check to see if this organization is actually leasing these fields out and, and making money off of them, what is our recourse to that?
Well, obviously, that's a prohibition, uh, basically taking a permit, so if I, um, give the fields to Dan, then Dan leases it to you, basically earning money, I don't think that's what the procedures or process is all about, um, so that, you probably need to do is go back and understand our procedures, I'm sure there's prohibitions within our permit process that doesn't allow for the signing or leasing of permits, because that's what essentially was happening.
Right, and the lease does state that, that that cannot happen, so how do we find out if this is just in, just something that was set off the cuff, or if this is an actual something that they're doing?
I guess what you're probably gonna have to do is, uh, go into or ask, um, one of the, um, participants who accepted the lease or assignment of the permit, and say, hey, look, did you pay for this, I mean, that's probably what we're gonna have to do, so...
Don't, don't, don't we have the permits that come to the Recreation Director, as far as we can tell, don't we have what, they have to still, uh, have a permit in order to le, lease the field, correct?
It's in the Recreation Department issuing those permits?
What happens, yes, what happens is, is that the Board of Education, again, from my understanding, is that they permit, they, they lease the field to the Borough, and then that organization contacts the rec department that wants those fields and gets a, a permit for those fields for the year, they get the permits for the year, and from what I'm, you know, from what I'm understanding now, is that then they go out and rent that permit out, I don't know, you know, I don't know how, and that's the question, is how do we find out if that's actually happening, if it is, I, I don't believe it to be legal, I mean, it's a free permit that they're charging another organization, we don't know if they're insured, they don't know who they are, you know, we, what liability does the Borough have at that point? Well, I think that maybe the first step thing we ought to do is ask Jerry if he has heard of this, and if there's any participants.
Jerry was at that meeting, so he, he was in on the conversation where it took place. Can, can we request the books to, to their financials, to see if there's an income coming in, I mean?
They're supposed to be, um, uh, in, in the, in the rec department, all, 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 uh, athletic associations in Sereville that receive a subsidy from the, from the Borough are supposed to file, uh, their financials, um, with the rec department.
They're, they're writing for them, that's what part of the...
And then they're in violation also.
Well, there's no ordinance that I can...
There's no ordinance, that's what we're trying to, that's what we're trying to...
No, years ago, we started that with the, uh, with the ID.
Mayor, there's nothing in there regarding the financials.
No, there's, there's nothing under...
That's what the ordinance is looking to do.
All right, I, I, I hope you're addressing it, the thing is, I don't know about going backwards, but we definitely have to move forward, because this is about this year's games for the kids and next year's games for the kids, if somebody was doing something like this and they were really breaking the law, we'll, we'll, we'll look at that, but at the, at the moment, I think we need to get, we need to focus, let's say, eighty percent of our time on getting, getting the kids playing this year, and twenty percent of our time, uh, addressing what may, or what may have happened, uh, in previous years, that would be my advice, um, it, it's, it's all about, uh, going forward, uh, correcting what, what mistakes, whether, whether deliberate or, or innocent, uh, were, were committed, it's mostly important about going forward, so let's, i, if, if you're in agreement, I, I would ask eighty percent of the effort be on, let's get this straightened out so that it doesn't happen again.
Well, it is, and that's what the, the ordinance is for, to put, you know, because there was never anything that said they had to give their financials, so now they do have to give their financials.
Okay, they should.
They do have to give their rosters, um, so going forward it will, but it, you know, it was just a little disheartening and perturbed me a little bit to hear that...
No, no, I heard, I heard the same thing, and I heard that, uh, I heard that, I heard that, uh, that person made the comment that the mayor can't do anything to us, and it's like, you know, if, if that's true, it was inappropriate, and, uh, actually, it bordered on ignorant and stupid if it was true, I wasn't there, so I can attest to it.
Um, and I think that is all I have.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman, uh, Water and Sewer, Councilman Melendez.
Thank you, Mayor. No department limited this week, I just wanna thank the Water Department, last week was, uh, obviously, everyone was very cold and freezing, fortunately for me, I wasn't here, so I don't know how cold it was, but I feel really guilty about that, because rumors called me about broken pipes, and, um, we did have two big water main breaks as a result of it, and, um, you know, talking to the guys down at Water, and probably Sandy was lucky not to be here this week, but, uh, they do a lot of work other than just making that water come through your faucet, so I wanna thank them for that, and, um, you know, the new person in charge now is Bob Smith, and he does got his hands full, you know, we, we're starting to talk regularly now, and I'd like to capture his, uh, life and, and issues and bring them so everyone can see, so, that's all I got now, and, um, hopefully we don't have that cold weather anymore this year, knock on wood, thank you.
Thank you, uh, I'm gonna finish up some appointments, uh, on the Board of Adjustment, uh, as a four-year member, uh, I'd like to move, uh, John Corrigan, and for a two-year...
Who's his spot, Mayor?
Yes, and then, uh, as a two-year alternate, number two, uh, appoint Bill Henry, is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Councilperson Buchanan?
Yes.
Excuse me. Iker?
Yes.
McGill?
Yes.
Melendez?
Yes.
Novak?
No.
Rittenhouse?
Yes.
Okay, the next one, the next one, is on the Human Relations Commission, a three-year member, Juan Rodriguez, is there a motion? Juan sent in his application?
Yes.
Okay, has anyone, has anyone got ahold of, uh, the leadership there to talk to them about this? I forgot who I asked.
Mayor, do you want me to get a list of, uh, referrals or recommendations, is that what you're talking about?
Well, Jose Opante is still on there, and Pete, uh...
Jose is, yeah.
Baron is still on there?
Pete Baron, I do believe, yeah.
Yeah, would you ask him to take a look at this and, and, and get their recommendations on this? Okay. Uh, is there a motion for Juan Rodriguez?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Councilperson Buchanan?
Yes.
Iker?
Yes.
McGill?
Yes.
Melendez?
Yes.
Novak?
Yes.
Rittenhouse?
Yes.
Okay, uh, on Commission on Aging, I'm gonna ask, John, there's a, there's an opening for a non-voting member, that's normally reserved for a representative of the hospital or bank, it's, it's not, they don't necessarily have to be a member, a resident of, of Sereville, but they have a contribution to make, that's why they're non-voting, so, if you have, if you would, if, if the Commission on Aging could bring a recommendation to me for somebody to fill that slot, I'll do so.
Actually, I have an opening for...
Uh, John, you just need to identify your...
I have an opening for a voting member for the Commission on Aging.
There's no, there's no...
Uh, because it was Christine Speezy who was the voting member, and I do have a, an opening for a non-voting member.
Okay, but, uh, let's do the non-voting member first, does, does Terry have the information?
She don't have it all, I'll probably have it at the other one.
All right, if you would, then I'll get it, I'll, I'll, we'll get it cleared up at the next meeting, unless you need it done for...
I don't need it, no, and I was going to ask you about that anyway, so thank you, yeah.
All right, thank you, John, okay, on the Cultural Arts Committee, I talked to Madeline Suchawiki, who was a gas and a god that they hadn't got their paperwork in, and I said, make sure it comes and just get a list to me of the people that would like to be reappointed, and these are people, as Councilman McGill said, who have served tirelessly and faithfully for years and years and years, and, uh, they may be annoyed at us that we'd ask them to, uh, fill out the application again, but this is the list that Madeline forwarded to me, and I have great faith and confidence in Madeline and her committee, so with the indulgence of the, of the governing body, I'll read the list in its entirety, so for reappointment, this is a one-year term, you know, we should really, uh, Terry, speak to Madeline about changing this to three-year terms, you know, alternate it like we did, remember we did that with the rec department? Right, just so that you didn't go through this every year?
Mayor, we'll just have to bend the ordinance.
Okay, um, so it would be Madeline Suchawiki, Shirley Myros, Hope Walk, Stella Stasiak, you know, I can't read that.
What's her name?
It's such a lovely handwriting that I can't read it, just read the list.
Stella Stasiak, Jean, um, Yud, um...
Ah-huh.
Kevich, I'm sorry, Jacqueline Locatos, Jean Cadado, Dorothy Mc... Kevich, I'm sorry, Jacqueline, Lakatos, Jean Godato, Dorothy McGee, Ron McGee, Edna Pilch, and Tom Fritson. This is a list that was dropped off at my office today. Applications are being presented to their, to them at their reorganization meeting on the fifteenth and she'll get those applications back to me, Mayor.
Okay. Is there, is there a motion?
I move that the mayor's appointments be approved on roll call vote.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Councilperson Buchanan?
Yes.
Iker?
Yes.
McGill?
Yes.
Melendez?
Yes.
Novak?
Yes.
Rittenhouse?
Yes.
Okay, on the Library Board of Trustees for the School Superintendent, a one-year appointment in accord with NJSA forty fifty-four dash nine, Richard Nemchek. Uh, is there a motion?
I move that the mayor's appointment be approved on roll call vote.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Councilperson Buchanan?
Yes.
Iker?
Yes.
McGill?
Yes.
Melendez?
Yes.
Novak?
Yes.
Rittenhouse?
Yes.
Okay, uh, Shaytria, I think is just a mayoral appointment at this time for a five-year membership, Steve Schaefer, I'm gonna make. And, okay, on the Housing...
Mayor, I don't have that application in yet, but if you wanna make that appointment, I'll send that application out to him. And if he just sends it back that he's not interested, I'll advise you.
Okay. Uh, on the Housing Authority, the, the five-year reappointment of Beverly Rapleye, is there a motion? So moved. Is there a second? Is there a second? Okay, guys for a second. Uh, and I think that's it this meeting.
Mayor, um, on the Housing Authority, I had sent out a notice, um, in everyone's packet, I don't know, about a week or so ago, that the governor did make his appointments to the State Housing Authority. And for Saro, they appointed Paula Duffy and I just wanted to make that known for the record and I'll put it in our records.
Okay. Uh, Business Administrator, Dan Frankel's report.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, last meeting, we had a discussion of a position for Chief Information Officer that was presented by Councilman Melendez. Uh, in your packet are the duties, responsibilities of what a chief information officer would look like. Um, we have qualifications. Uh, we have that this person would be planning and managing and coordinating projects. They recommend hardware and software replacements. They develop new methods and approaches to make us more efficient. Um, they'd be responsible for planning, for buying, anything that has to do with technology, with voice and data. And, uh, we would like to, uh, we, we evaluated it and one of the things that came out is that we are presently paying, um, in the range of around fifty-eight thousand dollars in shared services for, uh, two part-time staff people from Olbridge that work two days a week, uh, for part-time. Uh, this person's qualifications that we're looking for would be a full-time person. Uh, we'd probably be extending that dollar amount in the range of about another, uh, Councilman, we figured somewhere between probably forty to maybe sixty thousand dollars more in addition to the budget.
Yeah, I mean, you got two days' worth of work right now. We wanna get it to five.
Right.
What, what's the annual salary you're looking at, uh, Councilman?
Well, two days is sixty K.
No, no.
So we could double that.
No, no.
Somewhere in that range.
What, what's the annual salary for somebody, for an IT manager?
Probably like about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars.
That's the industry, uh...
Kinda low, but I think for, for this, um, you know, being a borough employee, you're not working in New York City, so obviously you would take less. But I looked at this situation as we need a person that can do both, kind of a hands-on person who has technical capabilities and as well as administrative. We could just go hire more technicians to kinda equal the cost, but we're not gonna get the management that we need. Right now, you don't have anyone in the borough that actually can make the...
Done as to, as far as what we need, before we go hire somebody, I, I know when I was on the Board of Ed, uh, we did a study first to see what was needed, what, what types of structure were needed. Then, once you see the total scope of that, then you move ahead with, with hiring somebody. I mean, yes, there is a need. I understand there's a need, you know, to get this done. It took about two days to get my email address up. One server couldn't talk to the other server, whatever, I understand that. But before, I think we're putting the cart in front of the horse. If we don't understand what our total needs, I don't know if a needs analysis was done. If it was, I'd like to see that.
I, I, I'm gonna ask you to work with Councilman Melendez based on your experience. You've got a grant, didn't you, Arthur, on the, on the school?
We had a grant. We also had the Local Government Budget Review Board recommend that we spend two hundred and fifty thousand because we were so far behind in technology at that time. That was at the time when they used to recommend and guarantee savings to people.
Actually, I think when we had our government review, but it was quite a while ago, they recommended that we have an IT man. That was back in the nineties.
I mean, do we pay for that? Another cost to...
The, the government review was actually free.
Yes.
They did that, the state came in and did that for nothing. And it was that, it was back in the nineties that they did it.
That's the same one.
Yeah, and they had recommended that we have somebody.
I mean, did they order it? Maybe they can order our systems and really give us...
Uh, if, if you...
I mean, uh...
With your, uh, you know, with your welcome, uh, welcome, Matt, uh, Councilman, I'll ask you to, to review this with, with our, and, and some, you know, sometimes you come across grant money. As they say, you can blame the consultant.
No, absolutely. My only concern is, is the time. I, I don't want this to turn into, you know, a year's worth of...
No, I think, I think both of you, uh, men are gonna move this along at a very respectable pace.
Perfect. Thank you.
Okay. Next item, Dan.
Uh, Mayor, ordinance increasing the fees charged for master plan from a hu- to a hundred twenty-five dollars and fees charged for land use law books for to sixty-five dollars.
Next item.
Authorization to extend a contract for the Water Department Chemical Cowgen for one additional one-year term with no increase in price with Coin Chemical.
Next item.
We have a request received from a Public Works employee to invoke his right under the, um, Family Medical Leave Act for a period of up to twelve weeks for a family obligation relating to childbirth. Um, I want to let everyone know that that is a federal law and we have to conform with that.
Okay. Uh, before I go on, I just want to thank Councilman Melendez. I know this is his expertise and that he, he works for Bloomberg Financial in this capacity. And there's probably no better company in America, um, with IT than Bloomberg. So I recognize your expertise in this, Councilman, and I appreciate you taking this initiative. Uh, I'm not, I'm not here to knock it down. Government work, as you found out, government's a little bit different than, than industry.
As you once said, your job, playing nice in a sandbox.
Okay. CFO's report, Wayne Kronowski, welcome back from your shoulder operation.
Thank you, Lord. Uh, first two items are standard for this time of year, the bill is resolution and a transfer resolution. Uh, number three is, uh, our annual, uh, housekeeping with the budget ordinance to increase the appropriation cap, that's the spending appropriation cap, from two-point-five percent to three-point-five percent. We will be well, well under the cap, I, I figure for, for this year, but, uh, what this allows you to do is increase the cap, the amount you're able to go, and bank whatever you don't use. So it just makes sense that in case next year or the year after, the bank is good for two years. If next year or the year after, we have a problem with the cap, uh, the spending side of the cap, not the tax rate side, uh, it, it's good to have it in the bank. So we, every year, we pass this ordinance to take advantage of it, okay? Uh, and the next item, just give me an update on, on the budget. Uh, hopefully, uh, between now and the end of the month, the, uh, Business Administrator and myself will be meeting with the, at least the major department heads on their, on their budget. Uh, I think next meeting, we're probably gonna have to schedule some budget workshops with the Council for February. The budget calendar, uh, as we received it from, from the state is, we're expected to introduce our budget by March fourteenth. So that would mean, that would be the March tenth meeting for us, a council meeting, the Monday before that, uh, be the closest to that without going past it. So, uh, so we're looking to get it introduced by March the tenth, okay, to stay in line with the, uh, the budget calendar that's set by the state. That's all I have to report this time.
Okay, thank you. Borough Engineers report, Jay Cornell.
Thank you, Mayor. First item is the tap place Sherwood Road, Haybridge Drive project. That work has been completed. We're recommending the project be closed out and a change order approved, which actually is gonna reduce the overall contract amount. We're recommending a resolution at your next meeting.
Next item.
Next item is the One Memorial Park Track Replacement Project. That project has been completed as well. We're recommending it be closed out. This one, there's gonna be increased, the Recreation Director had asked for some additional paving to be done while the track work was gonna be done. So it'll be a change over, increasing that contract amount. Recommend a resolution at your next meeting.
Next item.
Next item is the purchase of the pump for fire apparatus. We received bid for that project, approximately four hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars for a new vehicle with a credit for a trade-in of an existing vehicle. That purchase has been reviewed by the previous fire chief and he's recommended the contract be awarded. So if you agree, recommend that the apparatus is at your next meeting.
Okay.
And the next item, Mayor, is the Stevens Avenue Project. That's a paving project that's been completed for probably at least a year, but there was a pole relocation we were waiting for before we can close it out. That utility pole had been relocated, so we're recommending that project be closed out and you have a resolution at your next meeting.
Okay.
And then finally, Mayor, one additional item that's not listed. I attended a meeting today with the Army Corps of Engineers concerning their Raritan Arsenal project. Uh, if you recall, last year, I think it was October, they had started the study where they were reviewing the area from the Neptune Plant toward the Main Street townhouses adjacent to the river. Years ago, there was some dredged material placed there and there's the potential that there's some munitions included with that dredged material. They completed the first phase of the study, which located potential metal objects. Second phase is they're gonna go in and do a non-intrusive method to see if they feel that it's just some buried piece of metal or if it's potentially munitions, which would require possibly some further work in the future. There is a public hearing tomorrow evening here at seven o'clock with representatives of the Army Corps. All the residents on north side of Main Street, approximately fifteen hundred residents, have been notified about that meeting. So there will be a public hearing tomorrow to discuss that project further.
Okay, I do, uh, I was at that meeting this morning with the Army Corps. I do, uh, recommend that the governing body attend this. Um, one, one of the things that came out was, um, thi- this was, this happened during World War Two when the Raritan Arsenal was in full swing and munitions went over from the ships and the wharfs into the water and they dredged it and they deposited some of it on the Saro side. The big thing is, uh, let's take artillery shells. They did not have the primer caps in it, so if you hit the bottom with a hammer, you're not gonna explode. But, that being said, when and if, or if and when the Army Corps finds, um, let's say artillery shells, they are gonna detonate it on sight. So I would recommend anybody north of Main Street and, and the Sheffield communities, the Main Street townhome communities, Bakers, John, I would advise you to come and your neighbors to come. Because, you know, if you have a vacuum of information, then it leads to a lot of wrongful rumors. So, the Army Corps does this, they, they have a whole team that goes around the country and, and does this. If you think of the world wars that our country have, has been involved with and, and, you know, Saro was built on, on manufacturing gunpowder for munitions. Um, and, you know, things happen like this and the Army Corps is, is addressing this. So, as they said in this morning's meeting, we don't know, they, they did some preliminary work and they did find some, some munitions. They also found some hubcaps. Um, so let's hope they have more hubcaps than artillery shells. But I would strongly recommend anybody living north of, uh, on the north side of Main Street attend because that is the affected area. So, and I would advise the governing body to attend. I have a business engagement tomorrow night. That's probably one of the reasons I went this morning. Um, okay, that being said, the Borough Attorneys report.
Yeah, Mayor, uh, only one thing. You all had discussed an increase in membership of the Rec Advisory Board, but, uh, I just need a number so I can change the ordinance.
The current ordinance is a membership of twenty-seven.
What do we need it to?
Whatever you all want.
Put forty, okay. This is my quick...
That's fine, Mayor.
Okay. Lisa, you okay with forty? Okay. Uh, at this time, I'm gonna open the public portion. I will note that we have a good and a dear friend here tonight, Fran O'Connor, and I hope that your Christmas and your New Year's was spectacular. Good. Barbara, I know you have a question about the fire truck. Come on up.
You like spending my cash, don't you? Barbecue Commons, twenty-two Schmidt Street. Apparently, there's always unnecessary spending docks for Buchanan waterfront park that could have been, that was relocated, could have been used, and some equipment that's, I always feel, totally unnecessary. But Mayor, I would like to read something that I found in the paper that I think is pertinent, starting off the new year. And by the way, Happy New Year, everyone. Sorry I missed the, your installation, Mr. Rittenhouse, but welcome to the council. And I think this is very important since I've had something, comments to say about this in the past. And after this attorney put this in the paper, I think it's pertinent for the council, so bear with me. Texting at public meetings violates Open Meetings Act. Members of any public entity must follow the Open Public Meetings Act strictly. Many a jurist has written that secrecy in government creates evil consequences. Once a meeting starts, all the statements of the members of the public body should be able to be heard by anyone in the audience. This guarantees no secrecy. In prior years, I have litigated, in prior years, oh, I'm sorry, the contents of the text are not made public and this is an absolute violation of the Open Public Meetings Act. Sending and receiving texts during a meeting is illegal. Text messages can be subpoenaed in court, cases under discovery rules, and everyone should know this. Check out the meetings of your town's governing body, planning board, zoning board, as well as meetings of your municipal school board can be freeholders, and make sure no one is sending and receiving texts during a meeting while sitting on the dais. Also, it is illegal for members to whisper and pass notes after the meeting starts. If you see someone looking at his or her phone or sending texts, please stand up, remind the person respectfully it is simply illegal. So, the contents of the text, and unless they disclose the context of the text immediately so the public can hear a hundred percent of what is happening during the meeting. I love this quote, in Tombstone, Wyatt Earp made everyone check their guns. Maybe now the public body members should give up their phones during the meeting time. And I have seen this happen in the past and brought attention. And since it is a violation of the Open Meeting Act, and I think you should be totally aware of it. Getting on to borough business, um...
Well, Barbara, if I can, uh, I'll ask the attorney to go through the, the statutes and as long as we're doing our code of conduct, to incorporate in the code of conduct. It's a new world, Barbara, with electronic devices.
Oh, absolutely. Um, unless it's an emergency and you get, I'm sure, it was brought to my attention that someone, some child need to be picked up or whatever. But if you have an emergency and you get, you know, the vibration or so, you can leave the dais, dais rather and, you know, if it's a personal emergency, I'm sure everyone would understand that. But just to be aware that it is illegal. Um, a few people brought to my attention that the Saro, the Saro Fisher Buchanan Park was completely plowed and clear and Park Village was not done, Glen Court and whatever, prior. And it seems like our priorities of Public Works have a little, you know, I think private homes should be done before a complete park is cleared off. Um, another thing that was brought to my attention also, three weeks ago on a Sunday, a white garbage truck was towed by a loader by chain from Journey Road to MacArthur Avenue. I don't know if you knew, Mary, with the, if it was three weeks ago and you weren't head of the department or whoever was head of Public Works. Why would they be working on a Sunday, or maybe Mr. Frankel knows, on a Sunday and towing something illegal by a chain by a loader?
I, I don't know, um, I wasn't in charge of Public Works last year, but, uh, I was aware of the fact that we did have five trucks out on the road. I don't know where that was three weeks ago for the snow.
This was on a... This was on a Sunday morning, three weeks ago.
And there was no snow? Because there was one Sunday where we had to bring in five guys. But, George, would you know?
If it was anything, it was outside. They were running a garbage truck that they took before it probably broke down at the Starland portal. And if it was anything, the guys would bring out all the trucks, all the people, probably one of the trucks from the Starland portal.
This was definitely a Sunday morning.
Okay, we'll check into it, Barbara.
And, I mean, I don't know if we're now paying for Sundays or working on Sundays, not for Sunday mornings.
Only, only after the guys go to church.
No, there, there was one Sunday that we...
Yeah, we worked this Sunday during the ice storm.
During the ice storm.
But that was three weeks ago. The ice storm was two weeks ago.
Barb? We're going to look into it. It's all, it's all guesswork right now.
Another, listening to the, the books of certain, I think any time, and I brought this up a few years ago, when any type of recreation that is supplemented and is used on borough property and borough supplemented, be it for lights and whatever, should be at the discretion for an audit. And I feel everyone should have an audit to know, I mean, especially if they're supplemented with tax dollars. Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara. Are there any other questions or comments? I do want to, young man, why don't you take this microphone? I want you to make a cameo appearance. Tell us who you are and what you're, and why you're here tonight.
Okay.
What's, what's your name?
Vito Maniello. Oh, okay.
Waving the camera. Your mother's going to want this.
My name is Vito Maniello. I'm here to record the board meeting.
What do you do during the week, Vito? Are you a student?
Yeah.
At Cervel High School?
Yes.
Are we paying you for this?
Yes.
We are paying you. Oh, my God. Really? A lot? Okay, go ahead. Go ahead. Hey, Vito, I do want to thank you for doing this, so.
Thank you.
Maybe the one, the one time, but job well done, young man.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And, and what are you studying in high school? Where do you hope to do when you graduate?
I hope to major in Phil.
Good for you. We wish you well.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vito. Are there any other questions or comments for the open public meeting? Are the Bednar's here for, for moral support, or? Okay, okay. With that, I'll take a motion to close the public portion.
Mayor, I just have, we have one, oh, okay. I make a motion to close public portion.
Is there a second? All in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, Council President?
Yes, we have a special announcement to make.
Yes, we do.
We want to wish our business administrator, Dan Frankel, a happy birthday.
Just, just for the record, Mayor, the cake is from the Cake Boss, so only...
Were tax dollars used in the procurement of this?
Yes, no, that's...
What about the candles? You know, the candles in his...
Is that why you invited the Bednar's? Is that why they're here? Tell me if that was made by the Borough Council and the Borough Attorney.
Is it really? Oh, come up, oh, come up here. Come up here.
Was it Rich's?
Yeah.
Rich's birthday? I think he's a lot younger than you.
Did you go out for dinner tonight or what?
Yeah.
Oh, thanks. Thank God the firemen are here. Your birthday too?
Saturday was.
Wow. Happy birthday to those Capicorns. There we go. Come on up here, Rich. Come on up, Rich.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday
to you. Okay, with that...
Wait, Mayor, can I say thank you?
Well, I don't know.
Okay, thank you very much to the council, the mayor, and everybody. Thank you very much.
Okay, with that...
Motion to adjourn.
Take a motion to adjourn. Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, everyone. And to those birthday people, a happy birthday. Rich, John, there's cake for everyone.